Everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. It's six thirty and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Deputy clerk, can we have roll call please?
Here.
Ellis, here. Gakin.
Here.
Oskin.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Mackey. Morrison.
Here.
Newbell.
Here.
Bertini.
Here.
Bradel.
Here.
Eadore.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Or.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilor Mackey.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Scott.
Right, excuse councilperson Mackey. I guess it falls down to the political issues now, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Move in second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. Three minutes of public comment. Please list your name and your ward or address and keep it down to three minutes, please.
And I have some handouts that Miss Violet is helping me hand out. Today I figured I would put them in an envelope since nobody seemed to want to look at them last time I put them in an envelope. Um, I'm sure everyone is aware of the community markers that my husband and I have. There are over two thousand concerns that the city is in a handful of holes in it. Within our first few months of living here, we've had to call the police around twenty times due to violent harassment and violence around our home. That number was drastically reduced, not because of the phone calls, not because of the actions of the city, but because of the shame. We have put the problems front and center on our page. People are being held accountable and now thanks to our voices, others are realizing theirs should matter more. You guys have neglected the city into silence, lack of hope, that's just how we it works. Now that the citizens are tired of nothing being done, they are taking, taking their own actions. Now there's, now that there's game plans coming into play where were these workshops years ago? They are obviously going to be extremely effective, but why are we pretending like this is a new issue? The city has not. The city does not answer to you guys, you guys answer to the city. You owe every single person an apology and recognition of your constant negligence to the people who pay for your seats up there. None of you are special and some of you never even speak out at least a second on their nonsense opinion. The library offers a credit of forty-four dollars from pens every month. That's a lot of opportunities for us to put this in your face. We pay for these streets, why are we also paying for the people who are destroying them? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Joshua Franzy from Ward Five. Uh, let's see, I'm here today to talk about the intrusion of rules. We have had a successful fundraiser and working towards incorporating backing our bylaws and getting courts together. I figured I'd come in and give you guys a total of room this year. We've done eight cleanups with six different volunteers. We cleaned up four hundred and forty-three pounds of garbage. Uh, I'm sorry, four hundred and sixteen of that was garbage, twenty-seven of it was recycled. Uh, the average about fifty-two, which is about how much we pick up per cleanup. We cleaned up eight tons of railroad in ten years and almost a ton of that has been recycled. This year we picked up three hundred and sixty-seven recyclable containers out of the fourteen and a half thousand containers that we picked up. We turned eighteen of the six thousand cans, thirty-one of the one and a half thousand glass bottles, two hundred and eighteen of the seven K plastic, oh, sorry, glass bottles, plastic bottles. Uh, we picked forty-six syringes of a thousand three hundred and sixty-five that we picked up overall, average of about five per cleanup. Uh, planning on cleaning up the Chehalis River walkways off of Mill and Stock Street on Sunday at one P M. Whether you're on a free Sunday and still want to get your hands dirty to improve our local community, I also coordinate with the community guard. We have dark parties at one P M, Pacific Fox, school project, thank you.
Where's the cleanup again?
Uh, the Chehalis River Walkway, uh, northwest of the Chehalis River Bridge.
Okay, thanks. No one else, okay?
I'd like to move to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the March thirteenth meeting, counts payable and payroll. Second.
Main infected, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, uh, we have presentations tonight. We start off, we have two, the first one is the Board of at Grace Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for having us tonight. Um, I know there's a lot of new faces on the council, uh, so the board has been going out to every city uh, in the county as well as all elected boards for, gosh, I think we're on like year eight of this or so now. Uh, just to give you guys a heads up on what, what we're doing and uh, give you an opportunity to ask questions of us. So with that, uh, tonight with me is Commissioner Tom Quigg, representing the second district uh, here in Aberdeen. Our executive director for approximately three more days, Gary Nelson, deputy director Leonard Barnes. So um, we're just gonna buzz through this real quick, um, give you guys a chance to ask questions, uh, but we're always available if we don't have enough time tonight. Go ahead, next slide. Awesome. So real high level view here, uh, we were the second port district forum in the state with the passage of the Port Act in nineteen eleven. Uh, I'm sure most of you know, we have a deeply rooted history in the wood, timber, log, um, the industry, very important piece of what we do today still, very proud of that. A little bit about our governance, so we are governed by three board commissioners, they are elected by the voters of the county. Their district lines mirror those of our county commissioners, you can see those broken out in the, in the map there. Uh, so on your left, of course, this Commissioner Quigg with us tonight, the center is Commissioner Pennick, he represents the third district. And then on the right is Commissioner Bill Haddock representing the first. So if you can go ahead to the next slide. Normally this would be the part where I would tell you that they oversee, uh, I'm sorry, they hired an executive director who oversees the staff of about fifty-seven of us, which is, uh, the last couple of days I get to say this, as, as I'm sure most of you know, there is retiring. Let's just go over me, sorry, um, uh, March thirty-first. And I am very excited to announce, well, I think it's common knowledge that Leonard Barnes will be assuming the executive director role, which is awesome for our community, for our, um, our customers and for our port staff. Uh, it's gonna provide a great bit of, bit of stability and continuity, so we're, we're very excited, but uh, this is probably Gary's last public meeting. Is there all, all real lucky? He hates me right now. I get, keep a really busy week. Uh, okay, real quick, so here's a look at our mission. Uh, in essence, these three bolded terms you see here are what the port does, international trade and economic development and tourism. Uh, and how we fulfill our mission is through our lines of business, of which we have seven, go ahead to the next slide. So we're gonna buzz through all of these real briefly, we're gonna focus on and on a few big ones and big things we have going on. Okay, go ahead. The Barmen Airport, uh, it is a jet capable runway out in West Oak Whim, five thousand foot jet capable runway. Um, most people know that like flight took up operations out there last June, which has been a huge asset for our community, they're doing very well. And will continue to invest in their facility uh, here in Grace Harbor and grow. Our industrial properties, we have about a hundred and twenty tenants, uh, that's our, kind of a, a photo of our main industrial area there. Uh, Aberdeen and Oak Whim area, uh, there's one of our longstanding tenants there with L T Isaacson Brothers. Um, but our tenants do a pretty wide variety of things, we have Home Depot, uh, we have panel tech manufacturing, paper stone that goes all over the world. Uh, venturing into a product called Gator Skins, which is skateboard ramp using essentially the same technology. Um, there's trucking, just a wide variety of things, always looking to add to that. The Marina, so we're gonna spend a little time on the Marina today, cause we do have a very large project coming up and it's very busy out there. So no line of business encompasses our three main points of our mission quite like the Marina. Um, the processors at the Marina, which there are five, export their product to over seventy countries worldwide. Is the number one commercial seafood landing port in the state and ranks number nine in the nation for both value and volume landed, that is significant. For a town of what, two thousand people maybe? Um, so pretty great things happening out there and more to come. Economic development, obviously you have a lot of businesses in the Marina district there, but every single boat, uh, our annual mullerage holders that fish the nest since year round, each one of those is essentially a small business of its own. So there's a lot of economic development and activity out there. And of course tourism, uh, it's really the hub of the South Beach area, which has been very, very busy since uh, COVID times and continues to stay busy. I think Molly reported that they've seen investment in six of the older hotels out there that they've refurbished and the demand uh, continues, so it's exciting to see that level. So I think I covered a lot of this, um, but the one thing I, I could, I'm gonna touch on here is how, how busy it is for moorage out at the Marina. Um, so again, it is the commercial, um, year-round fishing, but also the hub of recreational fishing out on the coast as well, so. Um, recreational fishing typically starts what, a couple of weeks ago with bottom fishing, March fifteenth. Uh, and then we'll run through about October or so, and we're unique also in that all of our floating docks are open to the public year round. So you can go out there and drop a crab pot or fish from the docks, not all marinas in the state are able to offer that, so public access is very important. That being said, uh, we, our current configuration is about five hundred and fifty slips, we currently have a waiting list of about two hundred. And it's about a two-year wait, so a huge demand for that. Next slide, the next issue we're having is the floating dock infrastructure you see pictured here and throughout the Marina. Uh, it is almost fifty years old, so it is deteriorating, um, it needs to be either rehabbed or replaced. So we have been, uh, about, I think we're in year three or four now of what we call the Marina modernization. So we went through a huge planning process based on band and what, um, the fishing fleet and users of the Marina sees the future. Um, things like the vessels are getting bigger, right? So those slips, they were made for vessels that are about forty feet long, you know, it's forty years ago for the charter fleet. We're seeing trawlers in there now, the tuna fleet, eighty plus feet, so we need to make sure we have the infrastructure to support them. They get their catch through the docks to those processors to get exported around the world, have Johnson Westport. That being said, uh, this is a huge project, we're talking, uh, probably fifty million dollars, probably well over a decade, so we're, I'm gonna be talking about it for a while. Um, we have received, um, some funding to keep it going, get through the planning and engineering process, and then we will get down to action. Of the, um, of the floating dock infrastructure, so stay tuned for that, uh, definitely a lot more to come. This has a business park, so uh, it became a facility of ours on January first of two thousand thirteen. Um, some very unique infrastructure up there, obviously. Uh, we have the two greatest buildings in, in the county pictured in there, I thought I was being smart, bringing my red laser pointer, but red doesn't work on the screen, so next time. Uh, I am excited to say that the one on the, the right, uh, it's about two hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet, that warehouse is almost completely full with Lynch Creek Farm. Um, so they, um, started in, um, kind of winter evergreen, um, wreaths and tabletop decor for the holidays and they have ventured into year-round arrangements, some dry, some live. They actually just sent back, um, some very nice ones for reception back in Washington D C, made right there in that facility. So it's been really exciting to see them grow, but also it means year-round employment for them, for their employees, which is awesome. Next largest building is that three hundred thousand square foot turbine building, the red and white one you see there. Um, that we've had a lot of new tenants up there, a lot of, a lot of opportunity for growth and storage. Um, and then go ahead and go to the next slide. As I mentioned, that unique infrastructure, um, we did have a company looking, uh, at the possibility of doing green hydrogen, uh, on, on a site. Um, utilizing the, the park's water and, um, green electricity coming on. Right? Um, it hasn't come to fruition, but we are well suited for that in the future. Um, anybody paying attention to news that knows that renewable energy, specifically hydrogen, uh, there's a lot of conversations going on with that right now. Um, we were very excited to get a very important project done, uh, in the upper, our, kind of upper right bubble you see there, looks like logs in the river. That is, uh, actually protecting, um, the water line that runs across hall, our up and down Hall Road. So that, uh, forty-two inch water line is what, uh, serves Grace Harbor Energy, uh, which is the, one of the biggest power producers in the county, definitely the largest, um, taxpayer in the county. So very important piece of infrastructure we were able to protect, um, with a lot of great partners very quickly. Um, last but not least, we definitely have room to grow up there, it's great to see it getting full, um, but, but there are additional, um, warehouses, office buildings, and then developable land too, for anybody looking to build. And definitely last but not least, that Q R code you see right there, if you have not seen the historic videos um, Alyssa and her team at the park put together on the park, on, on the history of the, of this nuclear facility, you should definitely check them out. They are on StatsUp's website, very well done, we get a lot of requests for tours of the facility and we, we just can't do them all. Um, they're very small staff, so these videos will take you through those, those things you're wanting to see up there. Go ahead, next slide. And Friends Landing, so, uh, we provide several access points for, um, to the waterfront, just public access in general, but Friends Landing is essentially the line of business for us because it has RV and tent camping facilities. I'm not gonna read you all those bullets, but if you've never been to Friends Landing, it's pretty awesome, um, the walking trail, there's a brand new the both, um, Lake Quig and the Chehalis River for fishing or kayaking, um, very unique. And it's been really great to see that grows, but. Hey, get down to the big ones. The Marine Terminals is by far our largest line of business, um, that combined with what I'm gonna talk about next, which is our pilot services. It's for about eighty percent of our operating revenues I can talk about. Um, so we operate, um, four deepwater terminals. If you look kind of the top, you'll see Barmen Airport out there, there at Barmen Airport is our terminal three. So actually go to the next slide, I have a photo, there we go. Uh, terminal three, this is where most enterprises have, uh, is exporting woodships currently. We also have a proposed, um, pellet manufacturing facility on the, on the juice nut lanes there. Um, that is going through the permitting process right now, so you may have heard of that. Go ahead, go back out? Yep, that one, okay, so, um, coming down, upriver I guess, uh, terminal one, uh, which you can, can't really see, it's a liquid bulk terminal. Um, but it serves, the silver tanks is R E D Grace Harbor, um, they have been running at, thank you so much. Um, they have been running at capacity for several years now. Uh, lately, and they, um, are also sending barges of biodiesel down to California currently. Uh, and the white tanks is V W C terminals, apparently has three tanks of methanol and one tank M D I, just like an industrial, industrial solvent, would you call it? Leonard?
Resin.
Resin, but thank you. Uh, and then of course terminal two, uh, that is A G P's storage and export facility, obviously this is not dated photo because standing today they have twelve um, storage silos, they invested about fifty-seven million dollars this past year, uh, in, in the additional storage as well as their aspiration system. And then coming back up, yep, terminal four, so this is the largest of the four with two burst, you can see the two vessels there. Uh, we are currently handling both logs and autos, which is very exciting to see, uh, we are anticipating handling autos at least the end of the year. Talk a little bit more about terminal four here, about it. Go ahead. All right, so as I mentioned, directly related is our navigation services, so we are unique at the port as we actually employ our pilots, so they are licensed by the Washington State Board of Piloting, but they are direct employees in the port, just like Leonard Garian. Um, we currently have three pilots, which is very exciting, uh, one of them will face mandatory retirement to twenty twenty-six due to his age. Um, we are expecting to see a pretty good increase of vessel calls, so making sure we have, um, high-quality trained pilots on the channel is very important. And then we also, um, contract out for our tug assistance, there's a tug in March currently, um, provides that service. Go ahead, all right, just some highlights, uh, don't wanna repeat too much what's in the, in the annual Go ahead. All right. Just some highlights. Uh, don't want to repeat too much what's in the, in the annual brochure. I can hand it up to you guys, but it was a record-breaking year for the uh amount of cargo handled, which is very exciting. And keep that in mind while we talk about the T four project. Uh, as I mentioned, A G P put fifty-seven million dollars into their existing facility at Terminal Two. And then we had about a seven point four million dollar capital um budget uh project in projects this past year. Okay, so this is the big one. Hopefully everybody has heard of this project. It's been a couple of years in the making now. So um A G P, again, our largest marine terminal customer, doing um nearly three million metric tons of soybean meal at Terminal Two is wanting to essentially double what they're doing there at Terminal Four B. That's the Magentis. So they are looking to construct um um as a ship loader, uh, an offloading dump house you see there. And they're looking, it's about a hundred and seventy million dollar um investment on their port and on their part. In order for us to support them, we are going to need to make some improvements of our this is what we call the Marine Terminal Four Expansion Redevelopment Project. So we uh received a twenty-five and a half million dollar P I D P grant uh about eighteen months ago. We are very, very close to having it obligated. That means we get to start spending that money. Um, and the three pieces that make up this project for the ports part are first of all the rail. We're going to add about forty thousand feet of rail into our marine terminal complex. So that green um you see there, additional storage tracks up there, and then coming into that Magenta will be the new tracks uh to go into the new facility. And then in on the dock you see there, um, that's a really old dock. Uh, maybe the oldest one, Leonard, right? Yeah. So a new stormwater collection and treatment system on the dock as well as a new fender system. And then last but definitely not least, the yellow port you see there, that is the former five twenty casting basin uh for the tom tubes. We acquired that site at the end of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, it's been sitting idle unfortunately for a very long time. Um, so we are wanting to fill the basin and use that as cargo laydown area to support operations at Terminal Four A. So again, there's two two bursts at that terminal. We want to make sure we can utilize both of them. As you can see, when we add that additional rail, it's going to come up, cut up our existing marine cargo laydown area pretty good. So things like handling logs or autos um are are not going to work in our current, current place. So we really need to have that laydown area where you see terminal are of the yellow. But next slide. So these are some of the benefits for our community and beyond, really. So we're talking about eighty long-term jobs. Most of those would be law enforcement, rail or um tug side jobs too. As I mentioned, A G P's private investment in the facility. Um, we will be doubling ex, our export um capacity on the channel. So again, we're doing about three million metric tons of soy meal right now. We'll be doing over six million. The whole thing that's driving this, why A G P wants to invest in a second export facility is the demand for renewable fuel. So they have ten um processing facilities back in uh several Midwest states. So when you crush the soybean, about eighty percent of that is um meal and twenty percent of it is oil. So they're crushing it for the oil. The meal is simply the co-product of that. Very, very high protein though, so it um goes um livestock, aquaculture, things like that, especially in developing nations uh where they're trying to add more protein to their diet. So Southeast Asia is is the main focus coming out of the port of Grace Harbor. And here's a look at the project's timeline. I am very, very pleased to say we are on target. So what's been driving this very aggressive schedule is A G P's desire to be operational by the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we are just about approaching Q two here in uh twenty twenty four. So we're just wrapping up meeting our environmental uh permitting. As I mentioned, we're very close to obligations, so we should be going out to bid hopefully very soon. And the goal is to be uh breaking ground for construction by this summer. Uh, so it's, it's been quick, um, but we've had some really great partners making sure this. Okay. So I'm almost done, I swear. Um, and if you didn't catch on to it, uh partnerships are incredibly important to us at the port. Um, our partnerships with our customers, our partnerships with our community members, our elected officials like you guys. Um, that's what makes all of this possible. Gary said it best, big things happen in small places, right? Um, Grace Harbor is definitely on the map uh for, for exporting uh and other things. So we need to continue that momentum and keep things going. And last but not least, you all here in Grace Harbor are the why we do what we do at the port. We are your public port district. We want you to know what's going on. Um, so we are always available. We're happy to answer questions now. We'd love to have any and all of you uh to the port for a tour. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you for your time. Yeah.
Where was the potential high clean hydrogen site at?
Uh, you want to go back to the Statsup slide? Yeah. Right across from uh Grace Harbor Energy. Grace Harbor Energy is is not on port property. But the, the piece of acreage they were looking at would have been on.
Do you know what the scale of that would be about how large?
Do you guys remember?
I think it's about somewhere between forty and sixty acres. Building this uh worth the five hundred million dollars.
Yeah, so a lot of big things coming, actually.
Yep.
Probably the uh the B P A's ability to supply green power, uh, you know, whether solar into the park and then you got the water. And that's, that's why they would get challenges hitting into markets. It's not that big a market, Grace Harbor, that was.
Any with so many, I'm sorry, Liz, did you want to go?
Go ahead.
Yeah, with so many uh boats waiting to be, find more in me, you guys ever think of opening another um marina like here in Aberdeen?
No.
Service we provide. Are able to basically be paid the facility. By adding four.
Maybe you should take them.
Like, let me add, historically, the city of Aberdeen had their own marina.
Right. I, I know they used to have one. I just, yeah.
Small, but the city let it go for some reason.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe we do what your port can partner to revise something.
Maybe the city could do their own.
Um, so doubling the rail um export um traffic coming through, how many trains a day? Does that translate into and and have somebody modeled? Um, how that will impact um traffic and.
Great question. Yeah. Well, you know, I'm going to look to you, Nick. Um, uh, well, I, I will say, I know we're doing about thirty thousand a year right now. You're go, we're going to be looking at about sixty thousand, and that is fully up and operational, right? It's not going to happen right when they open their doors. So it'll be a ramp up. Leonard, you may know the breakdown by name.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand cars total to Grace Harbor. I don't know, opt, update. And then also the modeling question, yes, the uh Genesee Wyoming Railroad that owns the PSA, the low hop rate branch that starts at Centralia and then comes to Alma and then at Y, it goes up to Sheldon all the way to Plymouth and and then Orton coming out of, coming to the west this way all the way down. Um, that's all the model, yes, for additional siding outside of the city, uh, and also by construction.
I'm just wondering what that means for delayed, say, when I'm or more importantly, if I'm trying to get to Home Depot, to get their supplies to do somebody's roof here.
I know. Um. It lies on the, the slide that Kayla had that showed all the rail through it. Um. What about where else?
And our public works people are also impacted by that.
Thank you very much for everything that. So um there's in this area here where the red is, there's over thirty-seven thousand feet of rail track that the board put in. And we put that in and because trains stopping from Home Depot for a longer time, because at that point in time, rail is going across the West Side River into what we call Plener Yard, but then we stop, which is, you know, more law ones in this area. And those tracks down there will hold about twenty-five cars on them. So a unit train is a hundred rail cars. So that train would drop twenty-five off, back up, then come back and go to the next line. That's like, no way, right? I want to, I want to get into the store too. And uh so the port put this additional track in so full unit trains can better keep their momentum and go through. Um, this is the plan. This additional rail track that we're putting in the green, we will support that. So trains uh continuing to move.
That's helpful now. Thanks.
And then, you know, Liz, if you ever want to come down or something, let me know or let Kayla know. We would give you that too, Liz.
That would be awesome. I really appreciate you guys.
Welcome. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but just a comment. I wanted to thank you for this informative presentation and everything that you guys are doing down at the port. It's incredible. And I'd also like to applaud and thank Gary Nelson for his dedication and exemplary service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Keep down there, we need an eight, three round of the grass. We've been around for a long time, not quite as long as the other, but and it makes it a lot easier with knowing uh Leonard is going to step in and the team that we have in sight, um, it should be assumed wasn't anything. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure you'll be missed a lot. Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to just speak for a second. I, I think it's important to the council and you know um, the port has a very good working relationship with the Aberdeen Police Department, your fire department. The two people setting the radio there, they're awesome. They're looking good. Their staff, they're not here tonight. We have a great relationship with you. So and there are things that we need to, I mean, Ruth was just recently over and we had a good meeting with her, talked about a lot of stuff. I think communication is important, relationships are important. And uh so reach out and be afraid to ask a question. It's got a good staff and you know, you need to go all in.
Yeah, thanks. And I'd like to, maybe we could set up a, a day where we could all go as a team, team together to, to tour the port, you know? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we have another presentation, but I don't believe.
He's, oh, he's here.
Okay, okay, sorry. Uh, all right. So uh Grace Harbor Drug Task Force. Darren Cane. Thank you.
Hello, and thanks for having me here tonight. We had something happen tonight, so uh brush in, sorry if I was late, just you want me sooner. Um, thanks again to the mayor and the council for having me tonight. Chief Green said that he wanted to uh see if I could do a little presentation for uh the council uh on the drug task force and the current things here. And he said, don't be too long. So this will be brief, but I'll get through and try to get through the meat loads of it. And keep in mind, uh, if you guys ever need a better presentation, a longer one, we do have presentations that we do all the time. And one of the things that we are trying to ramp up is with the changing uh trends and everything, the fentanyl and everything. We are spending a lot of time educating the community of all, all um like the public sector, the private sector, uh, other law enforcement agencies, the kids and the schools and the teachers. And if you want a specific presentation, we will make it curtail to what you guys, uh, what you, what you want, what you need. So we do that all the time. No PowerPoint tonight, just, just me. So is my voice okay? Is everyone?
Okay.
Okay, so um just to vary on the history of the drug task force, the drug task force was comprised in nineteen eighty-eight. And it was uh composed of officers from the Aberdeen Police Department, the Oakland Police Department and the Grace Harbor uh Sheriff's Office. And uh the other agencies, because they don't have, we're the bigger agencies, they don't have the funding and the resources to put someone dedicated full-time in there. So it's just the three and in the chiefs of each, well, the chief of Aberdeen, the chief of Oakland and the sheriff, uh, Darren Wallace of the county. That is who the E board is for the drug task force. I am an Aberdeen uh police officer and I am a sergeant and I am the supervisor right now. It rotates a six-year rotation between the three agencies. Right now I'm in the fifth year of my six-year uh rotation uh as the supervisor. So um we work every day with uh all the agencies and they help us. And a lot of times, a lot of things that get done, we just tend to observe it, pass the patrol, they're the heroes and we just whisk away. So um not everything, not everything we do makes the paper uh or the media, and that's for strategic reasons, because we want to try to go up the ladder. And so that's kind of the way we do our business. Our overall fo- focus is mid to upper dealers. And why is it just mid to upper dealers? And why aren't we doing small cases? It's because, like everything, that's where the funding comes from. We get federal money from JAG grants and that is how we get our funding and they want us to go over, uh, they want us to focus on the mid to upper dealers. That doesn't mean we don't start with a small dealer. If we can go up that chain and get to a bigger dealer, uh, we also um you know, we'll do some nuisance things too, which I'm sure you guys have heard about or seen in the video. We usually publish those, they're nuisance ones, and we're not going up a ladder. We're just getting them uh place because it's a chronic place. Um, I tell you though, we have we have a lot of, lot of cases, we get a lot of tips and uh we have to prioritize constantly. So every tip, my guys, we get, uh, my secretary takes the tip, whether it's through email or uh the uh uh the tip line and every single one of them, we agree, we follow up on them. Sometimes, a lot of times people will, you know, they'll call and they'll leave a message and we'll try to follow up and, you know, three or four times, if we don't get an answer, you know, we, we, we stop. It must not be that important to them, but we try to, but we just have to prioritize it. You know, someone's not willing, you know, we, we try to make an effort, but at some point we just got to kind of move on to the other one. Um, so recently, uh like February, we ended, we were for two, two and a half, three years, we were in a, uh, we partnered with the DEA. And the DEA paid all of our overtime. They said they were going to send somebody down full-time for us. And we were going to work with DEA. All the overtime we had were great for the agencies because uh we didn't have to pay the overtime. DEA picked it all up. And what happened was our priorities and their priorities were different. They wanted us to be up on the I five corridor. We went as far as Medford, Oregon to the Canada border, um, doing cases. Sometimes they weren't weren't necessarily ones that were directly related here, but the overall goal, needless to say, it just didn't work out. And so we've ended that and we are glad to say we are back here now because that was a lot of driving. Um, it was a lot of big cases and it was fun too. But we were losing our identity here and we need to be back here making a difference here. So we still work with them. They're just not paying our overtime anymore and trying to do the best we can to not do that. But the way your cases go is, you know, you go, when you know you can, you can hit them. So that's when we hit the best bend for our buck. It can be, you know, it could be in three hours from now. You know, it could be fifteen minutes from now. When we know something's hot, we, we act on it. So um but we are back here focusing on. So, um, but we are back here focusing on Grace Harbor, holding right now. Um, so how we do a basic case uh might help you understand. Why cases take so long to do. And, um, what we have to do is we have to show, you know, someone's not just handing drugs to somebody. They are, we, we have to prove they are, they're actually a distributor that's doing this all the time. And at the same time, what we have to do is we have to do it to make sure that, uh, we're protecting our informants. Because how we do it is we find somebody that has a charge, maybe a suspended driving charge, something where there's not a lot of restitution. Uh, a victim that, that uh was a victim of personal violence, we find something, property crime, something that we can work with. We'll just use for this example, a suspended driver and they're looking at some jail time. And so we tell them, hey, how would you like to help yourself out? We will, we will lessen uh your charges or maybe sometimes we might even all drop the charges if they will do what we call controlled buys for us. And so what we do, we get someone to do that agreement, we talk to the prosecutor of the prosecutor, whatever that, where that charge is. And we draw up a contract and we uh agree what we're gonna do, what they're gonna get out of it. And then we have them go. Because, I mean, I can't ask for you guys to go buy drugs from these places because you guys don't have, you don't have an ink, you don't know who they are, you don't know how to get ahold of them. So what we do is we have them set that up and we monitor it and we have to, I'm not gonna go on the details. But we make sure that that deal is legitimate, legitimately from that person. And then we do that. And then say we'll do one buy. We have to wait a while. We just can't, we can't just go do through the eyes in a day for several reasons. Um. You know, it takes at least a month usually to, I would say minimum, to, to do a, uh, a few case on somebody. And then, then we bust them. And now we have to decide at that point, okay, is this somebody that's just a, not as big a dealer as we thought? Or they, they do have somebody that maybe we have someone in our sites that's a bigger target that we want to get to. We have to get to that person. It's kind of like a pyramid. Um, so we can get the big dealers. So, um, so that's why the cases take a while. Our informants like out on us, they get arrested, they, they have a variety of things to do. And, and uh they get in the way and sometimes we lose, we're right in the middle of a case and then something happens. Uh, if someone decides all of a sudden they're clean and they're going to drug court or they're, where they got help on their own. And all of a sudden they're clean and they're trying to get their kids back or something like that, they can't get conscious, use them and throw them back into that, that cycle. And make them new buys and not have them, and have them stay in that, that, that cycle. So sometimes some things happen. So we got to deal with it. But our goal is to get these people and make a case and go up the line. Um, so, um. In the last three years, fentanyl has taken over. Heroin was the big thing. You received heroin, heroin, heroin. And then, um, we got the fentanyl pills. And in case you guys didn't know, or anyone familiar with these, I brought a couple of samples just, just to show as I'm talking these. We hardly see fent- or Aaron, 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 heroin anymore. Um, it's like a black tar. And, um, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna come back because of the things the cartel are doing. We get updates all the time. We may see it back. It's really hard to see it. We had zero cases, we did recover some, but zero cases where we, um, where we actually. Um, worked cases of people selling heroin in the last year and a half. Um, and then it went to the fentanyl pills, the little blue pills. Um, I don't know if you've seen this for the first time or not, but, um, but, um. It went to the pills and everyone was doing the pills. You could put them in a little bottle, in a prescription bottle and, uh. It's just easier. It looks like normal. If you see these and someone has them in a bundle or a purse or a prescription bottle, you don't think anything about them. Because they look like normal, regular prescription pills. Then we got the fentanyl powder. I don't have a fentanyl powder here. Um, but it just looks like, you know, it looks like, you know, salt, sugar, maybe pepper. Uh, it depends on what they're mixing it. Some, sometimes they mix it with, um, like Ensure or Muscle Milk or MSG. Um, whatever the person that's using, that, that is making it bundles it with, it just, it just looked like a powder. It looks like, it looked like sand on a beach. Um, and, but it always has a little different look to it. Um, and already we're getting cases of, you guys heard of carfentanil yet? Carfentanil is, um, it's like eighty to a hundred times stronger than fentanyl. And they use it in zoos, tranquilize large animals to move or operate on them. And so now we're seeing that when we get our lab reports back. And then there's, um, there's trank and xylolene. Those are the new ones that are coming. And some of these, the, I brought some, the Narcan. Uh, some of them, the Narcan won't even have any effect upon. So I, I could do this present, this presentation next year. And at this time, and we're probably gonna be talking about a different drug that's not here yet. So we hear about these drugs and how they're changing from, um. You know, they start usually in the east coast or the south and they move this way. We don't get them for, you know, a couple of years until they reach way out down here in the lonely, lonely Grace Harbor in Washington State. Things that are, you know, we used to have marijuana and we used to have meth labs here. Nothing is made here. It's, it's all the, like, the, the, the fentanyl and the, uh, the meth, it all comes from the south. Usually Mexico. There's a very, very little bit that comes from Canada. Um, the precursors to the fentanyl. Are shipped from China to Mexico. Mexico or some of the border states now, they produce it in super labs. And it comes up the I five corridor. That's the way it's done ninety seven percent of the time. Um, so if anyone ever calls and says, tells you guys, uh, one of your constituents. That you think there's a, there's a meth lab by their place. I'm not saying it's not gonna happen, but they've made the laws so hard for them to do that unless. I think the last two years I checked, there's not even been a meth lab in Grace Harbor. I mean, in Washington State. So they're just not, they can make, uh, there's a method they can do to make a gallon of one, maybe a gallon. But it's so expensive and they get so hard to get the materials. It's just easier to get it, get it from coming up from the south. So how does it get here from there? Well, from the I five corridor, we have people every day that go up to the I five corridor. Anywhere from Lake Everett to Salem or farther, and they'll make that drive. Some people from here drive to. To California and pick it up. Some go to Arizona, some go to Nevada. But we have people that are going to get it. Sometimes the cartel comes here and the cartel does come here and we, we know the cartel comes here. And, uh, so those are the people that we try to get. It's gonna make it a little easier now, um, because we had a few incidents where we tried to pull over people with the, uh, laws of the no pursuits and people take off. Uh, um, we're, we're glad that that's now, now that we can chase them a little more. Um, several seizures. So the way that we can get these people, because we, we don't have people here going to have here cryptocurrency and things like that. Locally, we're not that sophisticated. Our dealers here, uh, there might be a little cash app use that we're watching. But for the most part, it's just cash in hand. Um, so how do we hurt these people? So how we try to hurt these people is when we get them, we take their cars, we take their cash, we take anything we can see that we know that comes from drug money. There are, uh, uh, like stolen property that, you know, we don't know who it came from and no one claims, you know. We'll take those and we'll take them to an auction and we'll sell them. Take their cars, we'll sell them at an auction. Um, right now, there's currently, there were four houses that I wanted to go after, but there's three that, that, uh. The prosecutor's office in, for the county is pursuing houses. Um, one in, uh, one on West Six, one on West Wishka and one on West Third. Um, that we're working on, um, uh, Code Off Enforcement Officer Bill Cedar is working on a house on East Market right now. Where that one, um, if you can, if you seize a house and you can fix it up and put it back on the market and sell it. Um, and it's a good thing for us to do, that's great. But there's some houses where it's not cost effective. It just basically, the house needs to be abided and tore down. And so those are the ones that, you know, we're giving back to, uh, Bill Cedar to look at new and work with the, uh. The homeowners on those. Um, we usually send a letter when we first bust a house, warning that can be seized. And when we're hitting the house the second or third or a fourth time, the guy's not getting the hand. And so we want to move forward and try to, try to take those. So we try to do that. It's a long process. Um, that's not what I do. I give it to the, the prosecutors to handle and the civil department for the county. And we are working through that. Um, uh, that's basically what I have. If you guys have any questions.
Yeah. I know that when there were people, dealers or producers who were doing meth, you'd have a meth contaminated property. The residence, the house or whatever, mobile home, whatever it was. And that was a real problem, environmental contamination. I'm, is it safe to assume that you don't have the same kind of environmental contamination issue with fentanyl and things like that being distributed out of the home? Or do you?
Well, so I guess just selling it versus if you're manufacturing it and things like that. Like we did use to have meth labs like in the, in the nineties, early two thousands where, yeah, that was, that was, that was a problem. Um. There were originally when fentanyl came out, um, and you can read this, there, there's a lot of bulletins now on it. The DEA has stuff on their site. We have some zone in our trainings. But everyone was thought like, oh, you know, these fentanyl pills, you know, if they're in the same room, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna overdose and might, might die, you know. I mean, obviously I'm comfortable today touching these, you know, like this, because I've dealt with it a lot. Um, there is some studies that shows that a lot of, uh, deaths related to the fentanyl, they were panic attacks. Um, from people thinking, oh, oh, I handle this fentanyl and, and panicking about it. Um, it has to get into the bloodstream. That's what they found now. And, um, if you, like, you could, like, say you're sitting at a table and you're having lunch. And you don't know that there was some fentanyl there, you certainly could get it on your hands and then ingest or wipe an eye or a mouth and you could get it in there. So it's possible. Um, still take precautions, but it's not as it thought. I, I've had, I've had quite a bit of fentanyl in my car and at the office. And, um, um, I'm not as honestly as careful as I probably should be with that, but, um, I haven't any problems. I, you get, you get lazy sometimes, you know, you get comfortable with it, but we've never had a problem with it. I'm not saying there's not gonna be a problem. I'm saying be careful if you see it, you're not sure what it is, don't touch it, use gloves. Um, but it's gotta get into your bloodstream. Well, now there's other ones that, that, that carfentanil, we might go across carfentanil and. That might be a different story. You don't know it. You don't know what it, it might present as fentanyl, but it might be carfentanil.
Because I know you were mentioning that, you know, there, I guess it's the carfentanil that's like eighty times more powerful or something.
Carfentanil.
What? I mean, I, I think we've all heard stories about how potent and powerful fentanyl is. This carfentanil. Are there extreme cases, but now substantial overdose because of that? I mean, I think you take something that's eight, ten more powerful, it wouldn't take much to probably kill you.
Yeah. And, and, and we have some slides on that where we can show you how much heroin will, you know, heroin, you know, it's probably about, I don't know, thirty or forty. Little pieces of like salt. And then fentanyl is about five or six little grains. And then carfentanil is like maybe one or two, you know, and, and, uh, how they, they, you know, just imagine taking, um. Taking, you know, a few grams, you know, like say one part, you know, a couple shakes of, of salt. And then make, mixing it with like this much, uh, pepper and putting it in like a magic bullet and stirring it all up. You know, you can't control where that, where that salt would go in that, in that. And we have demonstrations, videos on this too, to help understand it more. But there's no guarantee where that's gonna go. If you get two grains or three grains in one batch, it, it, it could kill you. And another thing is, is tolerance. Um, some people say of these pills right here, we have talked to people that. A few people that claim to smoke, um, like a hundred of these a day. So, um. And some of them have never overdosed. That's a rare case, but there are people that do that. Those people become dealers because they can't support that habit. Um, on the other hand, one pill, uh, this was a couple of years ago in Hopkumay now, um. Two girls took a quarter of a pill apiece. One girl, nothing happened to her, the other girl killed her. So there's just, there's no rhyme or reason on how, how it's getting mixed. And nobody, anything you buy on the street. That they buy on the street, no matter how careful they say they're getting, they don't know because it, it, it came from China to Mexico up to I five. They don't know how many hangs it went. People are dealing it here. They have no idea. They can't say what's in it. We have, we have, we have cocaine is on the rise a little bit now here and Matt, we're getting those with fentanyl in. And the people don't know. They think they're just buying, right now cocaine. People think they're just buying cocaine and there's fentanyl. And the, you know, and it's, it's, uh, there's no, it's not like they're getting it specially screened by a, a lab. To make sure it's the right stuff when we're selling on the black market.
When was it you said you stopped working with the DEA?
Um, February of this year. And it was, um, they ended up ending it because we were saying we need to, we need to be here more and never getting frustrated with us. Um, we were gonna end it before they did, but we worked with them before and we still work with them now. It's just like the bosses up there that, you know, the people that made the agreement with us were kind of, it worked in this area. But their bosses who came in and were newer, uh, you know, they just, uh, they had different goals than was presented to us. And we had different goals. It was worth a try. And we still work with them. It just, uh. It wasn't best for them and it wasn't best for us. And so we moved on and.
Yeah, they were, we asked, this town is such a horrible drug problem. And it takes a month, you say, just to arrest somebody? Is that it? Uh, that you know is dealing?
I would say that's on the light side. Yeah. Um, they also promised us they were gonna have a person down here to work with us full time. And so that was four people we were gonna have, um, add into our team to, to work on this stuff. And then. First person they would ever pull would be their guy. And to be honest with you, anyone that's working up in the Seattle area, um. Doesn't wanna drive to Grace Harbor. It's hard. Try to find somebody that signs up with the DEA and goes through all that stuff.
Well, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's really sad because so many people are dying constantly. And if, if you were to take the drugs out of this town, you would have a booming place. For a lot of happy people. It stops because they're not the ones suffering. We are.
Right. And you could give me twenty more people and we, we, they slammed the work still. It's like every day, it's like we have a hundred things to do. And it's like, you only have so much time in the day. And we're also dealing on, um, timeframes of people that can't keep timeframes. But it's that, it's the nature of our business.
With the citizens, I mean, we're, we're all rooting for you because we want that stuff out of our town.
And, and thank you. And, and I appreciate the support. And, uh, if you guys, you know, ever need anything or. E- education on it, have questions, uh, Chief Green has my number and my email. Or e- education on it, have questions, uh, Chief Green has my number and my email. I just got one just, uh. Last week that I, I followed up with you on and, um. That business is being taken over by someone and so I'm gonna have to figure out that connection, but, but, yeah.
How many arrests would you say were made last year specifically related to, to drug narcotic? Uh, distribution and how many successful prosecutions?
I had all that. I have it all in our PowerPoint, um.
All part, rough idea.
All part, I would say.
We talk ten or twenty or the hundred or?
No, I would say it was probably somewhere between forty to sixty actual arrests. That were prosecuted. Um, we make arrests all the time. It's just sometimes we have to decide. Are we going to, are we gonna pursue that? Are we going to? Uh, you know, how, how are we gonna, are we gonna go up the ladder and give them a chance to work? And that takes time and it's a lot of pay to work. Sometimes it doesn't work. Um, and a, a lot of times people get drug court too. Um, and I will say there's people that are against drug court and there's people against the, you know, jail. I think we quite haven't figured out, but I think we have to have both of them. We, we have to have both. We, we can't arrest the problem. But every time somebody gets through drug court and is productive in their life, that's one less person we have to deal with. And, um, I think, you know, we're still working that out to, to, to get to that point, but I, I do think we need both. And, uh, you know, if, if we certainly, I think we get forgotten a lot of times. Because everything's going to, you know, the drug court and the houses and reuniting with their families and stuff. But if people think that's all they get, all they have and they don't, they don't, um. There's no one's ever getting, getting arrested for it or serving time. It's like. I mean, we've arrested people and it's like, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk to him, I'm not gonna cooperate, I'm just gonna ask for drug court. You know, and there's matter of fact and they get it. And it's like, if, you know, I, I, I wish. Now with all of these, the funding that's coming and the, and the county is getting because of the opioid decisions and things like that. You know, if we can get some of that money to help us do our job, uh, that, that would, that would be great. At, at the same time though, you know, I think we, we do, we do need drug. Um, but I think everything seems to go in that way and there's nothing coming to help us do our job.
Seems like a lot of carrot and not a lime stick.
Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, I, I mean, these are, uh. Things we deal with all the time and we're always talking and trying to figure out funding sources, uh, uh. For the sheriff's office, um, the commander for the drug task force is Kevin Schrader. And he's a prior, uh, person who's been with Drug Task Force. And we just met because we lost the, the DEA contract, you know, we're always trying to find ways to get money. And we just met yesterday with Homeland Security and they have some money, um, that they're trying to get. For us to help us with our fight here. And, uh, what it is, is it's, uh, giving us money and more tools. And they're gonna send us some training to do, um, do more cell phone extractions and things like that. And also, um, so we can start, have a team to, uh, better investigate the, uh, overdose deaths. And specifically towards fentanyl, but if we can get onto any of that money, uh, we're working towards getting, getting those funded too.
Do we have a rough count on how many overdose deaths did we have last year in the area?
Uh, yeah, and it's a, uh, so George Kelly from the coroner's office, uh, just updated our stats. And, um. So when they determine, uh, a, a death that's truly related to, um. To a drug overdose, sometimes they have other medical factors and so those don't scream in. And I wanna say, yeah, it's on my PowerPoint, uh. Somewhere in the upper sixties to lower eighties was what the number was, uh, this, this year. But there were significantly more that they couldn't say they died and they couldn't say it was specifically for the drug overdose. Uh, it could have been, um, an underlying health problem, but they couldn't determine which one it was. So the number was probably higher. I actually thought it was gonna be higher, but when, uh, George Kelly explained that to me. It, it does make sense because a lot of people that do drugs have a lot of other problems that they're not addressing. Um, I will say for, that I know of, the second year in a row, we are. Way above per capita of overdose deaths than any other county in the state. So we're winning at something, but I don't know. We should be proud of that. So, I'm not. Um. Any other questions?
I was just kidding. Thank you for taking time out. You're incredibly busy scheduled for coming to my, my, thank you for everything you're doing.
And thank you for having, having me and, uh. Keep in mind anytime I can answer any questions or give any training, that's one of the things we wanna do and we really deep that up. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen and we're here if you ever need any help. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Thanks. Alright, uh, next on the list is the mayor's report and I just wanted to, uh, just take a second. I've been to a lot of meetings and stuff, but I didn't wanna talk about that so much as, uh, my. Some of the meetings, I've heard some negative things about, um, our staff at our city. And I just wanted to say, you know, like a lot of people, when I was out in the community, I had some. Some, uh, maybe not positive things to think about, the, the city and the staff. And I just wanna let you guys know, um, what an amazing staff we have in the city. They are so hardworking and so dedicated. I'm amazed at how much they all juggle. And then, uh, I'm gonna also extend that to our council members who. I know that we always don't agree on everything, but I know that, um, after working with you guys, I see that there are a bunch of dedicated citizens. That really care about our community, our council and, and I wanted to acknowledge that also. Um, and then, um, one of the meetings I was at, the mayor's luncheon. I mentioned how wonderful my, um, administrative assistant is here for, I did not. She's like an administrative assistant. Ruth Clemens is, uh, such an asset to our city and, and she is so dedicated and. Um, some of the other cities tried to trump me and say that their, uh, person was better, but you know. Aberdeen just takes the cake. We, we actually have the best staff in, in the whole county. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and that's my mayor's report. Uh, so now council reports. Councilperson, Ellis.
Mayor, um, last week was the North Aberdeen Bridge open house.
Yeah.
And, uh, a number of us went to that, uh, as well as, um. Citizens came and checked out the displays, hopefully filled out the, um, surveys. Um, but there was a lot of people I didn't see there that I was hoping to see, especially from Ward. Three area near the, the existing bridge. And just wanted to remind folks that you can go online to the city of Aberdeen website. And maybe from there go to the Public Works Department. There's a link to. Um, all of the different options that are being considered and, um. There's still a couple of weeks where you can weigh in on your preference as to which. Which the final few would like to see. Um, this is an important opportunity, um, because then the consultants will work up the costs. And a lot more design information for us to look at. So folks should check that out. And then there were also a few of us at the county's disaster preparedness workshop. And, um, it was really interesting just to see. How, um, Grace Harbor County coordinates really well with Pacific County and with, um. The state and all the different layers that are involved in, um, responding in the event of. An emergency. So that was really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm also at that disaster prepared meeting in Montesano and I really was proud that we had council members there. I don't think any other city did, so thanks for going.
I was awful there. I, they have some really neat handouts. I grabbed some extra ones, so if anybody's interested. And some of those handouts from them, I'll, I'll, okay, if they're great.
Alright. Nevermind. Good. Uh, we can move on to, uh, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for participating in the, um. Homelessness workshop last week. That really gave me a good sense of direction. Um, I think the most important piece that came out of there were the concerns that all of you expressed about moving forward with the shelter. So that really gave me direction as I'm starting to kind of like meet with different community resource groups, groups that could really kind of bring this to fruition. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Um, this last week or the week before last, I met with, um. Stafford Creek Superintendent Jason Bennett, um, to discuss the new gun range that we are constructing. Um, but I also wanted to talk about, I also talked with him about, um, canine training. So, um, Stafford Creek, it sounds like will be able to provide, um, to partner with us actually to do canine training. They also have canines there that they, um, use throughout the prison. So it looks like a good opportunity for us. Um, he also said that there might be some other opportunities for our police department and D O C to partner as well, so, um, uh, more to come on that. Um, I as well also attended the disaster response workshop. Uh, it was a very good workshop. Um. Met with Ken Mehan, um, from Grace Harbor Transit to talk about any kind of, um, future plans that the tran, that transit may have. And how those plans may affect the city. Um, so there, it sounds like they have some projects. It sounds like the site that they're currently in is temporary. So, um, they will be moving in, in, in the future, they will be moving out of Aberdeen and moving into a new location out in the county. Um, staff received lean, lean training. I reached out to the state auditor's office to provide lean training. Lean training is kind of this, um, principle that is taught throughout the state, but, um. It's, it's focused is process improvements, which in the long run would save an organization money. So, um, our execute, our E L D, our executive leadership team received it and then, um, the training. And then our next level managers also received the training. So we're gonna be headed in that direction. State Auditor's Office has offered to work on a project with us that could help improve, uh. An important process or any important process that we have here, have here at the city. Uh, I'll be working with the directors to determine which project we want to possibly work with them for, over the course of the next year. So they'll be working with us over a year's time. Um, last week I went on a ride along with the street sweeper. To better understand where the bears, it was really cool. And he has extended a ride to all of you. If any of you wanna ride the street sweeper. It's very interesting, actually. I talked for nonstop for a straight hour with him to kind of understand like what are, what are the things that he faces? What, what is he, what are the barriers that he faces? And so there's a lot of interconnectedness that, um, I, I've been hearing the council. And talking about like parked cars or code enforcement issues. So I, the mayor and I took a ride today. We, we did a ride along with, um, parking enforcement to understand what are the barriers that he's facing as well. And tomorrow we will be doing a ride along with the code enforcement officer to understand. You know, what are the barriers to his work as well and what does his day to day look, look like? So, um, these are things that we like to do. We like to take ride alongs as well. So I've ridden along with the fire department, police. And so it's just something to do to better understand how the operations of the city works. Um, lastly, and, um, I'd like to mention that we do have a health and sanitation cleanup scheduled on April third. Um, down at the State Street and River Street, um, park or, um, I'm sorry, State Street and River Street camps down there. Um, we will be, DOT will be partnering with us again and we will be cleaning up both, uh, locations at the same time. So, um, we will meet with the, um, homeless response committee next week to hash out a few more details. Um, but again, that will happen on April third. Um, so are there any questions?
Yes, actually, I, I do wanna comment, what I was gonna comment on is I also attended that disaster preparedness workshop in Montesano. And I raised a question in my mind of, and I don't know if that, this has been addressed yet. Do we in the city have a disaster preparedness plan for the city? And a committee or a group that works with that, reviews it and oversees it or, or what, or doing that?
Look at that.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, two, two different plans that we work with. Uh, the mitigation plan, which, uh, Public Works with Rick's group, they're kind of more the forefront that, that drives that plan. That is once something happens and kind of the mitigation recovery from, from a disaster or a major incident. Another one is the emergency preparedness plan, uh, which is the plan that we have, uh, in the city that. In the event of an emergency, how we're going to address it and how we're gonna manage and mitigate in, in the, in the, in the now. Um, that kind of falls up under myself as the fire chief and that plan is currently in review, uh, with myself and Deputy Chief Snodgrass from the Police Department. We've been kind of going back and forth on that. Uh, Rick would have to speak exactly where the mitigation plan is. That one is we dovetail it into the county's plan. And I know they're on the back end of that and we should be seeing something, Rick, within the next few months, I remember.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we received notification yesterday that the E M D and B E M A accepted our plan. No revisions, so we'll start the process of adopting it by our council. So it, it all, it all went through fine.
And, and not to get into any weeds in this, but I assume that there's a big difference between if we're hit with. The tides from a tsunami versus if we have an earthquake that maybe takes out some bridges or brings some buildings down and things.
Yes, the complexity of those, which is very depending on.
Actually because of access.
Yeah.
To the city. I mean, we're, the, the whole main access points in and out of, you know, water level pretty much.
Yes, and you know, that, this brings a really good point is, one of the things that you will see when the new, uh, emergency management plan comes out. It's gonna talk a lot about preparation and making sure that the public and citizens are well prepared for a disaster. Cause we're, we're gonna be isolated, you know, depending on what it is. So just being well prepared is gonna be a major part of all.
I would appreciate the opportunity at some point when it's, uh, big times available. To, to meet with you, sit down, talk about the plan somewhat. Appreciate it.
Um, are there any more? I did see a hand in the audience. We will have another public, um, comment period that you can speak then. Um, are there any other questions regarding my report? Thank you very much.
Is that for you?
Yeah, that was, yeah. So I think we have other staff.
Well, I do. I think Dave left first. You want, I'll do, yeah.
Go ahead, T.
Okay. We know Stacy's gonna have some.
Uh, so we had the, uh, the EMS hospital retrospective presentation, uh, last council meeting. Uh, we've been having some discussion at the, the staff level and with a couple of council members, uh, mainly in. Stan Seedor from Finance and, and Casey Morrison there is the, the council president, about the concept of a workshop for you. Uh, in kind of two parts of this workshop concept is we could do a workshop where we can kind of get more into the weeds of. What that presentation really means, uh, not just for the fire department, EMS, but kind of from a whole global budget standpoint too. Um, and then we could follow that workshop, uh, hopefully the same evening was the, uh, the public hearing that was requested. So, uh, I am recommending that we do that on the sixteenth of, uh, April. It's a Tuesday night. Uh, the reason we picked that night was Tara Dumpford, our finance, uh, person is actually in town that day. It'll be really easy for her to make that. Um, that way she would be able to attend and really answer those, uh. Budget questions, uh, much better than, than I could. So, um, I think, uh, Morrison might be bringing this up for a discussion point. And, uh, it might be safety, but I just wanted to kind of lay some groundwork there and, uh, say that's kind of what, where and why, so.
Alright, thanks.
On the agenda tonight is, um, hopefully the approval to award the contract for the Sturts Park Trail Ridge replacement. The, um, bid came in about thirty thousand dollars under budget. So we'll be able to use some of that money, I would guess, probably only ten thousand dollars. To do the rest of the repairs to all the structures along that trail. So this summer's capital project focus will be repairs. To all of the Sturts Park Trail. So this summer's capital project focus will be repairs to all of the Stewart Park Trail. Just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I have a couple of updates. Um, first, I'll address that hazard mitigation plan. I don't know if you remember, but two, three months ago, we brought forward an annex where we rated our different disasters. That's how we, it is a comprehensive plan for all the agencies of county. But we obviously have different worries than somebody in Montesano. So like our, our tsunami would have been much higher than it would have been for Montesano. So that's how we went through, we graded them, we pri- prioritized what the, and what the hazard mitigation plan does. It allows us to apply for funding, federal funding, and I, I get federal funding for di- these different uh disasters and disaster mitigation. Um, what I wanted to do real quick was there's been a number of requests by, by council and the mayor. And I'm not gonna bring up who brought them up, but there's just been a number of requests that didn't go through to me or uh, our, our citizen action request. That's a really good way to do it. If you want to make a request that gets documented, you get a letter that says uh, we received your complaint, your request, and, and this is what we're dealing with it. But um first, the ballards on Broadway, there was an idea about putting some ballards down on Broadway uh between Wishka and State, allowing for a better utilization of that corridor to block it off for events and things like that. We can put in some ballards that'll make it much safer than a traffic line. Um, comes out, it's going to be about three thousand dollars. We can absorb it in our budget and we're moving forward with that. Whoever brought that up, that's, we're, we're moving forward. That was a great idea. Um, another one was the, I think Stan, you had brought it up. I know David has brought it up. There's a, there's that perpetual spring in Broadway. And we've tested it and we dug around. We think we have a pretty good idea of what's happening. We told you we had a repair plan. Uh, the plant, the asphalt plant is going to be open next week. It's spring break. We're going to try and do it next week, weather provided, you know, cooperates. Um, the only issue is whether or if they shut down the plant. So that, that could change, but it is planned for next week.
Um, can I follow?
Yeah.
So you're gonna uh cure the deferred maintenance that's in the pavement right now? But does that cure the problem that's created that?
Yeah, what we're gonna do is ups, up the hill.
Yeah.
Upgrade. You're going to dig in a trench and put in a French drain. What's happening is the water is, is a spring is coming up. There's, there's two routes. One is coming up and getting above the concrete and below the asphalt. It's coming out, weeping out between the two. There's some fabric that used to be used. And another one is there's an old drainage line that runs parallel to the street that is abandoned and no longer, no longer in use. But it still has bedding in the trench and it still carries water and it's dumping it right there in that corner. So we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate that, add a French drain, connect it into the existing drainage. And um, we're confident that it's gonna, it's gonna fix the problem.
For sure. Thank you.
Um, another item was Wishcon L. Uh, I was asked to find out whose responsibility that was. Wishcon L is the one that's Kenny Carter from Great Northwest Credit Union. Uh, that's part of the street is in incredibly bad shape. I think ma- didn't you ask me about that one?
Should.
Okay. Um, and it, so he was trying to cross with the wheelchair and I, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically just one big problem. So we went down and looked at it. It is the state's responsibility. The where this, the where the state's responsibility kicks in is when you have a radius on those, on the the intersection as they turn the corner, when the curb line becomes parallel with the center line, that's where our responsibility takes over. It is in their responsibility. We've reached out to the state before and they don't have a lot of money for maintenance and things like that. It's in bad enough shape that we're reaching out to the state. If they can't fix it, we're gonna fix it. We're just gonna, we're just gonna do it because it, when we went down there, it was as bad as anything I've seen. So um, so we're gonna, we're gonna get that fixed. It, it may take a month or so because we're gonna try and get the state to pay for it first.
Um, Rick, where is this one at?
At uh Wishcon L on the north, the north side.
Okay.
So as you're going down Wishka, you turn, turn right on L and I think it's right there by the, the, the state corrections.
Yeah, right by the bus stop right there.
It is bad. Uh, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's really bad. So um, and then the last thing we have is the, the city engineer has put a lot of time into creating a capital projects list uh to better uh explain where Public Works is and where our priorities are and, and the amount of work we're, we're dealing with. Um, the idea is to have a list that we can now update monthly and you can see the updates and not have to be briefed on every project because uh, well, he, I think he was pretty brief and he has fifteen pages, so. Um, you know, he did promise me no more than five minutes tonight, so. But for everybody that doesn't know, this is Nick Bird, our city engineer.
Uh, thank you, Rick. Uh, yeah, so this, this uh Rick just pointed out, the intent was to really be able to share kind of what we've got going on in the Public Works and Engineering Division as we push capital projects forward. There is a host of items that we have on, you know, you're me, you know, squawking, whining a little bit about being busy. And without understanding what that looks like, then, you know, it just sounds like me whining. So the objective really is to kind of share what we have going on so that you guys truly have an idea of what we're, we're moving forward. And the community has the idea of, of what we're moving forward. And so, you know, really a list, I've, I've done lists before, lists aren't helpful. Um, and if I really spelled out everything on each project, you know, that's not helpful either because you're not gonna end up reading the book. This is just kind of the tip of the iceberg on each of the projects. Uh, and then the intent was, as Rick pointed out, just hit a super high level, you know. What is the project? You know, where are we getting money for it? Uh, what's kind of our timeline or schedule? You know, what has recently been done and what are we going to be doing here in the near future? Uh, so the principal focus is for us to be constantly updating this. The goal is to do this on a monthly basis. Again, from a workload standpoint, I, I don't want to promise that just yet, but that's the, that's the target uh on, on day one. So hopefully we find, hopefully you find this uh as a useful document uh as you're interacting with citizens or just trying to understand what, what Public Works is doing to move forward. But in the future, the, I, I've been accused of talking just a little too much. So the objective in the future is council has to report us thirty questions.
I was gonna say, I took a look at that list and I, I must say, I, I just don't think you guys have enough work to do. It, it was an impressive, impressive list. It was very good, very helpful. And I'm, is that posted on our city website at all? Can it be put into a PDF document or something?
It is.
Because I think citizens need to be able to go to our website and be informed about, okay, what's going on in the city? And things like that would really be helpful, I think, because people don't know. They, they have no, no idea. And uh, you guys, yeah, Public Works, don't ask for a raise now, but.
Yeah, two things as it relates to the website. Uh, there was a mention of the uh North Aberdeen Bridge Online Open House. So if you go to the main page, aubrylaw.gov, uh, it's listed right there on the top of the page. So you can jump right, right into the uh North Aberdeen Bridge uh main page. As it relates to this document itself, which again, we intend to update on the basis. The intent is right now, if you go to the main page, go to Departments, Public Works. And then there is a neat little page called Current Projects. It is shown on the current projects page.
Okay.
Are you gonna do the updates in red?
That's a great question. So what is, what is next month gonna look like? Uh, my intent is to, you know, publish both versions. I think, you know, we're gonna, this is gonna be kind of a learning process. You know, I need to know what, what you guys think is important and what the community thinks is important. My intent is to include graphics in the future so that you kind of have an idea of where things are at. Uh, we discussed during the, the committee meeting, um, you know, potentially including graphic that identifies where all of these different projects are at. Uh, so I think there's some value there. But month to month, the intent is to include a track changes version so that you can just peek, see the changes and not have to read the entire document.
That's a pretty good inaugural version of this. I swear to face with it. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
And I also um really appreciated seeing the whole um band of new projects. Um, I would like to see a little more detail with the lending project. Um, on many of the others, you were really good about noting um the dollar value of that project and where the sources of funds were coming from. Um, it would be, it would be useful for me to have that same value with the lending project where we're at and what the unplanned gap might be looking like at this.
That's something that's currently in development, but great point. We will work with that in the future.
Eric. Thank you, Nick. All right, uh, now we open the floor to the Finance Committee and Chair Councilperson Seedorf.
Thank you, Mayor Or. First, uh, we have a request from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Jackman Brooks, Jackman and Brooks Contracting LLC for removal and replacement of the Stewart Park Trail Pedestrian Bridge for an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-one cents. I move that we uh approve this, uh authorize the mayor to sign this contract.
Second.
Is there any uh discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes.
Second, we have a request from Finance recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement between the City of Aberdeen and the City of Cosmopolis for support services. I move that we authorize this request.
Second.
First and second, is there any discussion? Right, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, Public Works, uh Councilperson and Chair Hodges.
Safety.
Pardon me?
Well, Public Works has nothing to say.
All right, thanks.
What about the safety?
Public safety. Uh, okay, Chairperson Hodges.
Um, Casey, were you gonna?
Yes, I will. I'm gonna. This one tonight, uh, really short. I'll start with the Police Department. Activity report, eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven calls so far this year, uh, from last year, seven thousand, thirty-three. A total of two thousand, twenty-one were proactive traffics. Cosmopolis City Council voted in favor of Aberdeen's emergency police services proposal. Legal is now drafting the contract with the help of having agreements for councils to approve soon. Um, here's a good one for uh citizens too. It's a reminder that the city uses City Protect as a citizen searchable database for calls for AV. You can apply a multitude of filters for dates, types of calls, sex offender registry, et cetera. When visiting the site, search for Aberdeen or click on Map by State and select Aberdeen. Um, for the Fire Department, um, they are doing a Sound the Alarm event. If anyone is interested in volunteering for the American Red Cross Sound the Alarm Smoke Alarm Event, it'll be on April 6th and or 13th. If you would like to help, please contact the Aberdeen Fire Department. And as uh the Fire Chief alluded to, we uh would like to hold a council workshop to cover the EMS cost of service study in more detail on Tuesday, April 16th at six, followed by the requested public hearing at seven PM. So in that spirit, I would like to move um that the council uh approve having this workshop on Tuesday, April 16th at six PM.
Second then. First and second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Passes.
Is, is that proposed for six thirty or six?
Six o'clock with the public hearing at seven.
Thank you.
All right, um, special agenda, uh, agenda items, Council President Morrison.
We have some appointments for the LTAC Committee, um, for Lisa Smith, Danny Bacon, Jackie Elsos, and Lisa Blanchard. And I move that we adopt these appointments. And second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Yes.
Uh, let me give a little background here. Um, so two of the, well, actually, three of the members were on the LTAC Committee this last year. Um, Annie Bacon, Jackie Elsos, and Lisa Blanchard, correct? And a new member being considered as Lisa Smith, and many of you may know Lisa from uh her involvement with Grace Harbor Foundation. I think she's the, the director, Grace Harbor Foundation. Um, very capable, competent uh leader locally. Um, the question was, do we have other local representatives from our hotel motel constituency might be available to participate and serve on the LTAC? Because um uh members listed as C and D, Jackie Elsos and Lisa Blanchard had already been involved this last year. And uh Director Barnum indicated that she reached out to all of the hotel motels in the area and no one expressed any interest in being involved. She reached back out to Jackie and Lisa and asked if they were still interested in perhaps participating, serving again this year, and we indicated they would be. Um, so um I would support this slate.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose?
Red passes.
Yeah, we report from personnel recommending that the City Council adopt the new employee recognition policy. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Right, motion passes. Public Works. Oh, hold up, public comments. I'm sorry, I can't hardly see these people. I have glasses here, but I'm running. Uh, public comments. Is there any public comments? In, in three minutes. Yes.
Hate being short, but if I'm, when I fall, I'm close to the ground and I feel my body badly. Um, I just wanted to thank the mayor. I, um, of course, I'm, um, I'm not here such public work.
Public Works, yeah.
Public Works. Okay, the other day, um, my, my illustrious X-Steve Park, uh Boulevard, Nova Home Park. Um, we had our water turned off. Um, and, I mean, the whole park did. And so I called the water department and I talked to Brenda and she said to me, um, the reason is, is because your boss, which um, Susan Rogers owns the park and another park and the laundromat that no longer is there. And um, he had not paid the water bill for quite a long time. And so they chose to come and turn our water off. And we have fifty-four units with people in it and we were like in shock. So um, I suggested that we call the mayor. I understand that the mayor did call back Larry and I was at work. We also, my husband also called um, the general, the um Attorney General, that's who it is, to complain about the problem of them constantly just turning the water off, not informing us. We had the water turned off again today for four hours because supposedly there was maintenance to be done. None was done in our park. And so we're kind of in limbo on how do we correct this? Um, again, the mayor was wonderful and tried to help. Um, um, eventually, a couple hours later, um, the owner's husband, Brad, did come up with some money and pay for it and we all had water. Um, a lot of us decided that if we were not going to have water for a while, we were going to protest by holding our rent. Because why should we pay for our houses when they're not going to provide the service that they promised? So um, and I have a neighbor that's next to me where um the owner, husband Brad, had Jason, who is a maintenance person over there and he's supposed to be contacted. He and someone else came over and turned my neighbor's water off. Um, it's been off for two weeks now. Um, Courtney's part, she knows where the water turned her on or is, um, the valves, because I put it in there. And so she turns the water on when she needs it and then she turns the water off so she doesn't get in trouble. But they said to her, and her name is Tammy. But they said to her, and her name is Tammy Forbes, and she lives in number nine. They told her that Brad had told them to turn the water off and not to turn it back on. Period. That's your three minutes. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, but again, I want to thank you guys for helping. At least we have water.
Any others? All right, then.
There are several. I'm Michelle Never from Ward Five. I was up here two weeks ago. I would like to say thank you for the most part. We are starting to see improvements down in my neighborhood. The tents have been cleaned up. But, and with all that, one trailer did get their notice saying they needed cleaned up. But it still isn't helping a whole lot because we now have a van dealing to our high school students. And unfortunately, I had to see it last week while I was peeling out of my car. So, I don't know, maybe a little more enforcement down there, because I see an officer maybe once every. Maybe once a day, if that, and they set my camera off. That's about the only time I ever see them. Thank you.
Ms. Marcy, I am from South Aberdeen. I don't know what ward I'm in. This is my first meeting here. And I just wanted to say, you know, I'm. Kind of confused. So the drug task force came up and said they're looking for, you know, the bigger fish to fry, so to speak. But it's all the little fish that's causing so many problems in our town, and I don't see what enforcement's going on with them. And so even if we get rid of all the big fish, we have all the little fish still looking for the drugs. So what are we going to do to maintain them also, to kind of get them? From seeking or buying or making or dealing themselves? I don't know. I just kind of got a little. Confused, you know, I see the bigger picture, getting the bigger people out, but having. You know, I'm just driving here today, so they'll lock down in front of me. They just cross the street. There's no regard to laws. And I feel like I'm being a child, so I sit them in my car. Who's apple? Me. I don't know, just that kind of a little. This understood to me. And then I had a question for you. So when you send their cleaning up underneath the bridge, I don't even know if I can ask you questions, can I? Sure. Under the bridge, are they cleaning them out, or are they just going out and taking all their garbage and they're staying there again?
We'll be picking up the trash there. We by law can't displace people unless we have a place for them to go, so.
Pines for having tennis?
We'll be, we'll just be picking up the trash. Yeah.
Thank you.
Marcy, would you be comfortable giving me your. What street you live on is on that?
Stockwell?
Stockwell, okay. I'm your council member. This is also your council member. You're in Ward One.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Israel Tiedemann. I'm from here in Aberdeen. I live over by. AJ West High School Elementary. And I hear a lot about the thieves going into places. Walmart, Dollar Tree, you name it, they're always walking in there. And nobody can chase them. Nobody can do anything. You just have to watch and walk out the store. What, what's being, what plan is being proposed to stop thieves from stealing from? Thousands from small businesses or even bar? It's got to be done with it. I, I live over there and I had five thousand dollars worth of stuff stolen out of my garage. They actually broke my garage door. And broke in still five thousand dollars of stuff. I'm an ex, I'm a veteran of the war. Of OIF, and. This is the thanks I get for, for. Doing my duty for my country, getting stolen from. I just, and I know there's plenty of people around here that are thinking the same thing. What's being done? And then the other one is. The. There was talk about a. A overpass that was going into, going to go into Walmart, so nobody gets clogged right there by the train tracks. What's, what's being done with that? I mean, is it still in, is it still in the whatever? Or has it just been dropped? Who wants to wait there for gone?
It's in, it's in final design, and we're fully funded, seventy-three million dollars.
Sweet, sweet. That's what, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, you know, that's, that's awesome. But as far as the thieves coming in and stealing a thousand dollars worth of stuff and just walking out. Because nobody is able to, nobody can stop them. They just have to sit there and go. I mean, I'll be, I'll, I'll be a security guard, whatever. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm a military. If it takes veterans to stop this kind of thing, I'm all up for it.
Thank you.
Is there a start date for that project over there in Walmart?
Say again?
Is there a target start date for the Walmart term?
Nick, you want to address that?
Target advertisement date is mid-two thousand, twenty-five. So you probably won't start construction until later, later in the two thousand, twenty-five.
On employee recognition, we're having a hard time. Everybody I've worked with at the city has been nothing but good. I've been working with the building department, the electrical department, the water department. Every single person that I've worked with has been top notch. And with the public works, and I noticed this a couple of years ago. It used to be where. It'd be a long time before the streets got shut off before they flooded or a long time for the ice or DI's going to go off. It's done. It's like on a regular schedule, so good job there too. Good job there. Oh, and by the way, Brit is a great, great ass.
Thanks. Thanks, you. Also on that, overpass or bypass, remember the bypass project, they're already working on acquiring properties and. And removing buildings and, I mean, it's already in the works, kind of. All right.
If I may for just a second.
Yes.
Can I hand it over to Chief Brian for just a second? To, going back to this gentleman's comment here, could you talk about the enforcement blitzes you've been doing with Walmart and Devo?
Sure thing. So one of the challenges we have with retail theft is the store needs to call us. There are some stores that have employees that they don't allow to call. That's not on us. As soon as they call us, we respond. Every shop within the city, we've made hundreds of arrests so far this year. So we take enforcement action on everyone we can and we can prove it's in several hundreds. And as the Council President had said, we do commercial blitzes with multiple businesses in the city. Whenever they, they need, they want to do it, they call us, and if we have the staffing to do that, we can go do that. So that, that we're able to allocate an officer to stand by the store, and then they bring asset protection people down. So if you see something happening, you need to let the store employee know, and then they need to call us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, any, any council people with anything for the good of the order? Yes, council personnelists.
Thank you, Mayor. So as City Administrator Lemons mentioned, that this coming Wednesday, there will be a cleanup of the camps under the bridge. Destination Hope and Recovery is helping to coordinate that with the residents who live there. And volunteers, and they could use donations of. Plain tarp. So on the sizable size, ten by twenty. Four-person tents. And large contractor gauge. Garbage bags. So if folks want to help support this effort and. The people who are going to be working the city staff, that's one way to be involved. And Destination Hope and Recovery can take donations during their normal business hours.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then it's your.
Major to close the evening.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody.